6:04, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone is intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, they should notify me at this time. We're all set. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the floor for public participation. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes of October 17th, 2024.
So moved.
Second? Roll call? We don't do a roll call, right? Eyes? Hi.
Hi.
Same.
Next on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with the SRO, so I'll be turning the floor over to Dr. Prue.
So in your package tonight, you will see an agreement for Silver Lake. It's the same agreement that we have with the Kingston Police, that the Kingston School Committee has approved, but we must sign our own SRO for Silver Lake. And so I'm seeking tonight the approval of the committee for the chair to sign on behalf of the committee to approve the SRO agreement. It is the same agreement, minus some edits to reflect new additions to staff and things of that nature, but it remains the same as our agreement from last year.
I'd like to make a motion to accept an M.R.U. with the police department of Kingston, where Silver Lake Community Schools allow the chair to sign on.
Second? All those in favor? Oh, my question, because Russell looked at the changes.
He did. He looked at the new one. The changes were non-substantive, so.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on, the next item is the CTE garage door recommendation. Possible vote. I think we're going to turn to Sarah first for that.
So when we last spoke about this E.E. door project, there was a possibility of moving it to June. There was an additional cost, and I brought that information to you at the last meeting, and that was not favorably received. And I was asked to speak to Russell today about this. And so I submitted all the contract documents to him. He and I spoke, and he said we had three options. One of our options was move the project to June, which was the additional $14,990. We could do the work now outside of the school day, which would cost an additional $40,260. Or we could rebid the project. Rebidding the project would cost us an estimated $100,055. Our architect does not recommend rebidding the project because that would have us essentially purchasing the garage doors and have them sit in storage until we got a new contractor, and then they would potentially be out of warranty. So I brought this information to the Safer Committee at our last meeting, and they voted two to one to suggest that we move the project to June for the additional cost of $14,990.
Any further discussion or questions? Jean, why was there want to vote? Is that because of the cost to move it to June? Or just the overall principle?
Yes, because I think that there was no vote for our side. And in the meantime, we have an authority who cannot represent us in this particular case. So I have no idea why we should pay something or have expenses if we did not do anything wrong on our side.
Agreed. But it doesn't need to be done.
Yeah.
Two options, sir. So it's a catch on you. Do you have a silver barrel?
Do you?
Right.
No. Completely unfair. I agree.
So to be fair, a good part of the increase is the fact that the prevailing wage rates will go up. They go up every six months. So the moving it to June increases the wages of the workers, which no one has any control over.
Michael?
Do we know what the wage is in June? Like, is it going to up again? Because that's in six months.
No, that's the $14,000. That's the $14,000.
I was a reluctant majority supporter, but I totally approve of Lucas. We are somewhat over a barrel, and this is the most costly way to get a job done. It wasn't often not to do at all. But we've got a lot of engineering involved in this at this point. The interruption to the school would be problematic, even if it was outside of school hours, during vacation, or whatever. So that was my biggest concern, was the administration that spoke to the fact that the better prices were. That was my sole vote, supporting the extra money. And I hate extra money.
I think I kind of feel a little bit more. Is there any further discussion? In that case, I would entertain a motion to move the garage door to June. I'd like a motion that we move the CTE repair of the garage door to June for discussion for the additional $14,000 cost.
I'll second that.
And any further discussion?
I'd just like to ensure that we have a pre-contract in the meeting this time through the committee. We expect the fire chief and everybody that's involved on the town side with the contractor, Michael, so that everybody's on the same page about materials used and how to maintain the egress.
Can that be written in?
I don't think it needs to be a motion. I just want to ensure that that happens.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Upstairs. Upstairs.
Okay. Our next item, HVAC options and money remaining from 70 vans. I think that is also Sarah's.
Yes. Hang on. Thanks.
There was $160,000 in the FY '25 capital plan for special ed vehicles. Ford limits the number of chassis that produce skinny gear, and we were able to get the Transit World Chair van that we ordered, but not the Transit World van. So we will be spending $87,227.50 of the budgeted $160,000, and there will be an excess of $72,772.50.
Any questions from the committee?
Jean, sorry. My understanding was that the Safer Committee also discussed how they would propose utilizing those funds. Is that? But if I'm mistaken, one of the reasons why I thought we were discussing this is because we needed to determine how those funds now could be used.
Can we spend them on garage doors?
This is under HVA, so.
Michael's here. I want to.
Yes, it was HVA C that we were going to.
So I think.
Let me match Michael and get along, Michael.
So I think a few months ago, you guys voted to take the $100,000 for building envelope money for this fiscal year and use part of that for facility assessment. And the remaining, which was approximately $72,000, to do HVAC repairs. One of the main HVAC repairs that I wanted to do was the auditorium unit here at the middle school. That repair came in at $60,000 for heat recovery rail on one unit that's 19 years old. That needs to be replaced. So I think what we were looking for is to get the approval to not do that and use that money on other smaller ones that we need to do. That unit will be probably the first one to be replaced when we complete the physical facility assessment.
Go ahead, Mike.
Your proposal would be to use that, set up the best of the $60,000 on a 19-year-old unit, replace the entire unit. But currently, that unit can still keep an air conditioning setup?
No, that unit right now can barely heat, so we're going to retrofit that to get to heat until we can replace that unit next few days. So the money that was, I think, voted to use on HVAC repairs, I think I had discussed it in the original Safer meeting, that that was the first unit. So we just wanted to make sure that you guys were fine with not using the $60,000 on that one unit. If you voted to use that $60,000 on that one unit, it's 26 weeks out for the part alone. And again, it's a 19-year-old unit that has other issues. So you could spend that $60,000 and have more failure to just keep the money in. We have a proposal where we can retrofit that unit and continue to heat without the recovery rail, but that unit would be most likely first on the list in order to complete the facility assessment.
Any other questions or remarks?
I support Michael's proposal. I'm going to get back to us quick and then spend the $60,000 on something.
Yeah, I can give you this. There's numerous stuff, working on a couple of different stuff. But one of it is retrofitting that unit to make it heat. That's about $9,000.
How about?
$9,000.
Of the 60, you spent nine.
Yeah, I think the original number was 72. That one fixed with 60. But we have some air conditioning units that have died in electrical closets that need to be replaced because of the transformers and the heat nodes. You don't want to hold the heat nodes, so we need to work on getting those replaced. But this school has numerous communication issues that we've been working through, so we may have controllers and units to replace.
All right, so what we're voting for tonight is take the $60,000 off the table, allocate it for to be named later items on the capital plan that you brought back to this committee for spending on.
I believe it was 72, the original. Yeah. Because it was 72.
It was 72,000.
My plan was to use the auditorium first and then whatever's left. I didn't expect it to be $60,000 for one part of the auditorium. So the idea is to use that 72 on numerous units, including roughly $9,000 to get the auditorium here at the middle school working.
Do you have a specific list of how you're spending the $72,000 at this time?
Not at this time, no. There's numerous units, so I was waiting for this to move forward to get quotes on all the other stuff.
When we come back to the committee and tell them what they're spending the $72,000?
We have a meeting beginning January.
January?
Yeah. I'll have a fight.
So Jean, we made a motion tonight. It's with the understanding that as prices and things come up, then you would come back to the committee.
To this committee or Safer?
Would it go to Safer first or this committee?
Yeah. We're meeting right ahead of the next meeting, so we can review that at the last minute. You could review it, and then have it ready within minutes after this.
Jason, did you have something?
I just had a differing opinion from Mark, but I'll defer to the chair.
What I'm saying is, if you want to... Is there anything in that list of things that might get done with $72,000 that you need an answer for tonight before we go forward?
Just the $9,000 repair to the middle school unit. It's roughly $9,000. It's slightly over, I'm assuming.
If you're not prepared at this time to discuss anything else other than the $9,000, up to $9,000 will be cleared.
It's a little over, Mike, so up to $10,000.
$10,000. Number four.
Dr. Prue? If I may, this was discussed at the last Safer meeting, and we all agreed that he would bring it forward to find out whether or not this community would support using these funds to pay for other issues in the HVAC units in the Silver Lake schools. So at no point was Mike asked to create an itemized list for this evening. I just want to be clear about that. Again, I don't know if maybe the motion could be made so that we say that the money can be used for HVAC improvements and repairs? I can keep it like that. Jason?
So that was my intent to draft language to allow Mike to get started on this project. Honestly, there's not that many business days between now and the next meeting. If he comes up with anything else that's critical, I trust Mike to take care of it, report back to us. We can then look at that one comprehensive list. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to authorize Mike to use the $72,000 that we now have because we didn't get the 70 van for use on any HVAC project, including the one here at the middle school auditorium.
Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Just with the request, when you have a good list that we can see, I'd like for you to get to work on it.
Yep.
And wait for us. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Okay, so on to the principals' reports.
Hi, everyone. Just a few updates on student activities and then also teaching and learning. Our students brought in dogs with canned goods for Thanksgiving, and those that donated to a local food pantry. They're also going to head start the Snad Group, Students Making a Difference, and Student Council. They're going to head start Marshfield this week to spread some holiday cheer. One of the eighth-grade pods is also going to be an E.S. to work with the kids, read a literacy book with them, and also do a holiday craft, which is exciting. We're more excited here about teaching and learning. We've been through classrooms, and with five or six school days left, there is still a lot of learning happening. We're seeing carnival ride creations in tech ed. We're exploring amendments in civics while we're also applying general world problems to linear equations. Unbeknownst to me. They're designing and investigations in science in ways that I have never seen before. And kids are engaged in talking to each other every day. And it's really, I'm really proud of the place that, you know, the education that we have here. At any time, you know, you want to come by and see what's happening in classrooms, I welcome you to, because it's a pretty happy place, even though there's six days to a holiday break. So we're excited about that. I have one request for field trip. As you know, I've tried to make the middle school big field trip more equitable for every pod. They used to do, different pods used to do different field trips. And they would like to, again, go to Kennedy Lake in June, far from now. But we know that it's an out-of-state field trip, so I would need your blessing for that.
Do you agree that field trips can be a part of the schools?
All those in favor?
Thank you so much. Secondly, I came to you the past two years asking for halftime, additional halftime adjustment counselor. Our do have one halftime and one full-time. I would like to make that full-time for the remainder of this year, knowing that the next year's budget, you know, we don't know what that is going to look like. But because of an unexpected resignation and because of a leave that somebody took, I do have the funds to fund that. And as I've told you, our students do not get just regulated with half of the day. So any help that I can get for the whole day while we have the funds, I would like to utilize that from January till June. With Sarah's blessing, of course, she did give me her list.
Make a motion to approve the point five adjustment counselor for the remainder of the year for the middle school.
Second? All those in favor?
Thank you so much for taking the time. Thank you.
Okay, off to high school.
Great, I'm going to let Carissa take the floor first with the fun, exciting stuff. And then I'll dive into some of the particulars that require some folks to step in.
I'm going to keep it short and brief. So we had Laker Day going on, and we changed the law. Laker Day was here, actually. So we had, like, pictures coming and a pep rally. But we decided that instead of doing a student teacher dodgeball, which is actually like a really big hit. Mr. Peanut told us that a lot of teachers are still hurting physically from it. So I don't know about that.
We have a few workers' comp forms that you can write.
So we also did Masked Singer. So the teachers came in, they wore costumes, and you had to guess who they were. And the people, I guess, first got the gift cards. And then we obviously had the pep rally at the end to celebrate the athletes and also the tug of war and stuff like that. Beauty in the Beast played. Just our musical, I guess, went really well. The cast and crew were really happy, and I thought it was an amazing show. The winter concert is coming up. I'm sure some of you guys know people who are going to be in it. And we had female flag football. That went not the way we wanted it to. But it's okay. We all had fun. And then for any fest, we are doing tutoring at P.I.S. and the middle school. We also, coming up, we have some individual service projects that in order to graduate, one of our students, Ellery, she actually decided her service project was going to be to get a bunch of art from all of the schools, like elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, and display them at all of these contests which are coming up. So that's really exciting. So that's about.
Thank you for that. Although we did not win, flash the ball for the Thanksgiving Day game. So we'll score from that. We did, the event did raise $1,500, which we donated to the Stroud family. And they chose to forward that donation directly to the Maddie Stroud Foundation Fund, which will benefit senior local high school and Silver Lake community schools. It's still a pretty incredible thing that our students can raise money. All right, I wanted to provide you all with an update on our eight-period schedule feasibility. We have been working on our mock schedule, if you will, on a separate server for the last couple of months, all based on the student requests that we took last February and March. Once this was built, which was a several-week-long process, our counselors kind of dive back in and then hand-schedule students that may have holes in their schedules. They confirm placements and make adjustments based on those requests. And then as an administration team, we then take a global look at everything and try to create like our teacher coverage schedule from there, making sure everybody is where they need to be. We've had several working group meetings these past couple of months that have included our curriculum coordinators, data coaches, S.L.A. representatives, and then members of our schedule committee to work through some of those hurdles that we're seeing. Currently, those hurdles that we're trying to clear, we're noticing that not all students who requested a world language can currently be serviced. Our class sizes have increased a little bit in this mock schedule. We have a lot of students with multiple holes, which results in multiple studies. So even though we allowed students to select a directed study if they needed it, if there was a hole in their schedule because there was a conflict, you know, it was a singleton class that ran at the same time as another singleton class, for example, they would be assigned another directed study. And then you have a potential for students to kind of go three hours a day without kind of direct instruction as well. Our C.T. students that would now be able to fit a full-year wellness would possibly lose in the left if they tried to get. And then some of our singletons ended up running the same block because we can only do four classes a day. So and then our biggest hurdle is that we can't cover all of our teacher duties in the current construct. So our next steps are guidance counselors have been working on adjusting as many of those schedules as possible. Right? The computer kind of spits things out, and we go in and try to manipulate it. So that's what they're in the process of doing. We will be able to wrap that up right before vacation next week. And then we'll revamp the teacher coverage schedule, see what that looks like. We'll take another look at our class sizes. I'll be proposing some elective offerings to you tonight. If those are approved and go through, that will certainly help us with some of those holes in the schedule. And we're going to have to do sort of our best guess. We won't really be able to beta test it because they aren't classes that the students selected during course registration process. So our counselors will sort of have to go in and say like, all right, let's say Jason has a hole in his schedule, but we know he's taking these electives, but we know he's really into carpentry, so we're going to put him in the carpentry elective. You know, we kind of have to manipulate it that way to get a more thorough understanding of whether or not it would function. So our plan is to get that wrapped up by vacation and then work with that larger working group. Again, we'll come back to the table. We'll have to make a decision about school year '25, '26 by January because we do have to start the course registration process in January. So that's an update on that. And I will share that update with families as well. A couple of parents have inquired, you know, what have you heard about this? What's happening? So I'll share that. When are we going to decide? But I wanted you to know first.
So before I open it up to other people, I have a couple of different questions. So the first one's just kind of a logistics one. Is this going to, instead of having seven classes that they see all year, would they do like four in the first semester, four in the second semester?
They would still attend all classes all year. The schedule would go A-Day, B-Day for Silver. So for A.B., you know, blocks one, two, three, and four on Monday, five, six, seven, eight on Tuesday. Yeah, so they would still have the classes all year long, but every other day.
And then my second question is just about the hole. Except we have two questions. If there are still, like, is there a critical number of kids? Do they have too much non-instructional time? Does that affect our overall time on learning requirement with Desi?
It doesn't affect time on learning because directed studies are considered, and if it's not, there's a support block as well to consider time on learning. But I wouldn't say that it's good for kids.
Yeah.
Right? Especially if they fall on the same day, right? There are a couple of schedules right now where a student has wellness period one, two directed studies back to back. Are all great classes, but then their next day it's their English or math or something, right? So it's, that's tough for students, too. So we want to try to avoid those types of scheduling.
Anybody else want to?
Is this a definite go for next year pending the feasibility? Or is this something that we're still going to take into consideration coming this year?
So I think for it to roll out next school year, we do need to make a decision by January. So if these hurdles are still in place and we can't manipulate the schedule enough to feel good about every kid has a full schedule, teachers can provide coverage where needed, then we would need to either go back to the drawing board or take a look at what else we can do if we wanted to make a change.
I have a question with just about the courses that you presented to us for the changes in courses. Would those only be if we go to the eight-block or the block schedule?
With the exception of CTE, all of them are regardless of whether or not our schedule changes. CTE would be only if we went to the eight-block schedule, otherwise we can't fit it into their schedule. Yeah. And that would be a way of helping fill some of those. Yeah. Great question.
So this was similar design to what we used to do here, right?
Correct.
So what has changed with the contract? Something was in conflict with the current teacher contract.
Nope. Both schedules, the way that they exist are in the current teacher's contract.
Oh, they are?
Yep.
Okay. There's no conflict with?
No heck bargaining, and our S.L.A. representatives have been a part of the conversation to make sure that we're... Which is probably the reason why we're trying hard to make it fit into the four-by-four because we wouldn't have to negotiate that. And if we're close to it, right, there's still a few hurdles, and maybe we do need to do a contract negotiation. I think that would line up next year is when we start those negotiations, right? So that would probably be the next phase.
I pulled a couple of our meet my meeting family members that are still playing graduate. Probably a few more.
We really enjoyed it during, we got to experience a taste of it during our hybrid year. A little bit of a tease.
So we don't need to vote on that, do we?
No, it's just more of an update, yeah. And then I wanted to follow up Officer Allen and Detective, Lieutenant Detective Scivera. We're here at our last meeting to present the draft of their presentation for local community and our students. We sent help that presentation. We did the parent and family community presentation first on November 14th. That was in collaboration with Kingston Police, as well as the FBI and the district attorney's office. We had represented us from each of those organizations we tend, and they each had a piece of the presentation. The information was very insightful. I thought it was very concise, but pretty firm on here's what will happen if your child says or does something like this. Unfortunately, it was not well-attended by parents or community members, but it was filmed by a local PR company. They interviewed the chief afterwards. So I'm hopeful that when that is produced, we will be able to share that with our families. We unfortunately cannot share the slides the D.A. or the FBI presented. We have a very strict policy on what, you know, they can do live presentations, but because the information is always changing and they can't give a legal advice for free, we have to be careful about sharing that. But we should be able to share Officer Allen's slides, the ones we shared with students in conjunction with that. We'll be our clip when that's ready to go. One thing worth noting, I'm sorry, we did a follow-up there with the students the following Tuesday. All students, grade seven through twelve, we did seventh-grade presentation, eighth-grade presentation. So we did it by grade at both schools. I will say that the students, I think it resonated with them. There was an incident at the high school right after the presentation and at the middle school. But they actually predicted this. They did say like, you're gonna see something right after and then we should be able to shut it down. So it didn't surprise anybody. They anticipated this. And again, I would just say it's worth noting that both the District Attorney's Office and the FBI, the FBI especially, they wanted to be quick to jump on board to be a part of this because they have not seen any other school communities do something like this proactively to try to educate their students on this. So they wanted to sort of be ahead of the curve with us. So kudos to our school district and hopefully we see a change in student behavior and they understand that we do take this very seriously because we have to. If you have any questions about that, I'd love to answer them.
Any questions from the committee?
Just thanks again for putting it together. I was excited prior when you first brought it to our attention. And I'm glad that you followed through, you had the results you had.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
And a big shout out to Officer Allen. I'm not allowed to speak publicly, but August crushes it.
And I think you did it three times or six times, whatever. It was cool.
Yeah.
I just want to add my thanks. Caroline gave them, but she was definitely like, this made a difference.
Yeah, and I do think the kids still get sick. I mean, check out the ones. Like, we didn't have to have any of those conversations. They were, they were very attentive, so, no. At least we gave twelve turn-down presentations, so. All right, I'll jump into our program of studies. We have some new course, new course title, course removal proposals. As I just mentioned, the CTE was, will only be if we move to the eight-period schedule. Otherwise, we really can't accommodate that schedule. But that would be, the goal would be to add some electives to provide an opportunity for some of our students who either are interested in a full CTE program or maybe didn't get in, so they could still have access to the program or a taste of it anyway. Our ELA proposals, I'll try to do a quick summary of them. We want to place the existing journalism elective, which really hasn't done all that much, with a unified journalism class, which would mirror a unified wellness program where students can stuff separate programs compared to peers. Learn about reading, writing, a newspaper, and the other elements of journalism. We are also looking to update some titles. AP Seminar will be renamed AP Seminar English Two. And then we're looking to drop some of our elective courses that have had minimal or zero involvement over the last four to five years. Again, journalism, podcast studies, old-fashioned bear and modern writers, social media analyzing data over time, AP Seminar. We have AP Seminar Course Need and Research. Do you want to go by apartment or all together at the end? There's a lot this year, so what can I do to help?
I didn't think there was anything controversial, so if you just mentioned.
Perfect.
What you'd like to suggest.
May I just interrupt to say that the folder for these were in the top of our shared thing. It wasn't, yes.
Yes, very limited find.
Oh, good.
We tried to make it pretty and organized for you this year. There were a lot. Fine Practical Arts, we want to change the title. Digital, digital education to digital communication. We want to add that piece of a teacher recommendation to tech theater because we are working with power tools. We want to be able to, it's very much an independent class. We want to make sure that we don't trust students to be working on these large sets because of safety concern. In math, we're looking to add honors algebra. We currently have algebra one, but we want to provide a linear sequence and an earlier on-rant for students who are looking to accelerate in math. We don't sell a lot in math. And then in science, we're really kind of rebranding some of these electives so that they better align with the Project Lead the Way expectations. We do receive grant funding, so one of them, we kind of have to do it. But also, we're just taking existing courses like Manufacturing Enterprise, Intro captive, Robotics, Bioengineering, and we're just really bringing those so they align better with Project Lead the Way. And then in social studies, we're looking to actually split our current affairs class into two different grades actually, so that we have freshmen, sophomores paired together, and then juniors and seniors as opposed to all four grades. Just because some of the, the nature of the conversation and the maturity level maybe of the conversations is just to help our sophomores and freshmen feel a little bit more comfortable engaging those conversations, sort of build up their discourse, right, in ways of communicating. And then they always hit the course again as a junior or senior. And then we're looking to add a women in history and culture elective, which I'm super excited about. And then AP Research is actually the second part to the AP STEM class that Sarra is teaching right now. So it would be another opportunity for it to expand for our offerings. I think that is my, as quick as I can, review all of our proposals. And I would love for your support to make them all go.
Make a motion to accept the new course proposals. New course change requests presented by the principal.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much for your support, and that's all I have to say.
On to school district business, Dr. Henrys.
Special education.
So we went through our first pile of TFM review, which was on site. The Department of Education came yesterday. They visited each school. They did walk around with the physical surroundings. They are not going to be looking at records or anything else like that for compliance, just the physical surroundings. We do have a couple of concerns, which we're going to try to take care of through budget process. On the whole, most of the schools did very well. And then myself and our assistant superintendent also had to upload all the documents for the civil rights as well as the special education. So I think between the three of us, we have probably close to two-hundred artifacts that we were able to produce. This portion is complete. Next Monday, we will have the online interviews with all of the principals. They've sent us the schedule. Everybody's logged in. And then after that, the superintendent, assistant superintendent and myself will meet with the Department of Education, go over the initial findings, and then we'll get a report. I do expect that we will have one corrective action at one of our schools that we need to address.
Is that, you said one of our schools. Would that be the middle school or the high school? Is that one of the all?
It's one of the, yeah. And there is, no, there is one at the high school as well.
Jimmy?
Dr. Redd, here we see, are the financials that are in here that I was doing Sarah already talked about later, are those directly related to increases in tuition for actual staff that's related to?
I think Sarah's going to speak on the.
I guess the hundred and three percent increases that are included. Is that something totally different?
Doctor.
So I believe when it was brought up in our last meeting about the increases to programming, we put in the documentation related to that. And I believe that Sarah provided the updated version, so.
There is, there was a sheet that was created on the initial request that I did. And it has all of the major, there is like four different schools that have extra ordinary increases for next year. Kind of pushing when they go, they're full listed on the budget sheets this year. I have bolded them so that it exceeds close to forty to fifty thousand dollars of an increase.
Each?
Of each.
Right.
And then also the this year's students, that sheet is different. And I highlighted them on that sheet as well, so that you can see it by school. And then you can see the entire roster by students. And we can redact the students, the students' names and just student one, two, three, four, five. Yes, we addressed that. And that is two reports from the next year's budget at each school as well as one this year that we can.
Any other questions from the committee? Is there anything? I don't think there's anything. We don't vote to accept them. Thank you very much, Dr. Henrys. Okay, financial reports.
So in your school report, there was a financial report that was produced by the district accountant. I wanted to run through this report and just comment on several things on here. So on page two at the top, you can see that there's a new line for special ed settlements that was budgeted for in the legal line previously. Halfway down the page, the pre-K clerical budget. That is being paid out of the appropriate line. It was budgeted as part of the special ed clerical line on page eleven. On page three and page four, you will see for the long-term substitutes at the middle school and the high school that there was nothing budgeted, but we're spending money on those. So we will always be budgeting money in the substitute lines and then paying it out either on long-term subs or the daily subs. But we're not going to do the analysis mathematically to try to predict long-term substitutes for the year. There's, at the bottom of page four and the top of page five, you can see that there are new payroll lines for extended school year. That was budgeted in the tuition lines, but is being paid out of the appropriate lines. On page six, we were moving instructional hardware to a correct line. On page eight, I've created a new line for after-school supervision. On page nine, I'm paying the high school grounds out of a contractual service line where it was budgeting supplies and materials. On page ten, health and life insurance. If you recall from the spring, there's a glitch with our financial program, School ERP Pro. We know how to correct the issue after it's happened, but we will need to have a consultant assist us to fix it so that it doesn't keep happening in the long term. So currently, there's one point three-five million dollars unspent in that line. And the report says it's overspent by, I think, five-hundred-and-thirty-something thousand dollars. I just haven't had the time to make the correction for July through November yet. The rest of page line, I'm sorry, the rest of page ten, the deficits you see there is just moving things to the correct line where they're being spent. On page twelve and thirteen, for special ed costs, there's a lot of moving parts in special ed. And the special ed bookkeeper maintains a separate spreadsheet tracking the special ed contracted services, tuitions, and transportation. The spreadsheet she provided today and updated today shows an overall circles at this time in those three categories.
Any questions from anybody? Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
Hey, Dr. Clifford.
Hi, everyone. I just have a few curriculum updates, and then we're gonna have our presentation reviewed by Melissa Green. First, on November fifth, we have professional development day. K through two spent the day on structure of literacy. The grades from two through six worked on writing and benchworks, bencharts around writing. So K through six teachers were able to lead with their counterparts, seven through twelve. The K through six art, music, PE, library, technology, nurses and guidance group. Special education teachers focused on new YEP and ed plan. Paraprofessionals met at KES and received professional development on behavioral strategies. And at the seven through twelve level, educators met in departments and continued their work from September third, working on data analysis in math, English arts, science, technology, engineering, and other areas. And they were also able to participate in breakout sessions which focused on things as far as grading, five oh four training, STAR training, and AI in the classroom. So that was November fifth. And we have also continued our work around the literacy needs assessment to the K through twelve needs assessment to really look at literacy in the district and find out what's happening with literacy K through twelve. So we had a presentation from Darcy Burns, Executive Director of Hill for Literacy on November fifth at two-thirty. She came on and was able to present to everyone and sort of tell them exactly what had happened during the needs assessment, which basically has three parts to it. The first part is focus groups at each one of the schools throughout all of the districts, finding out from teachers what their thoughts are around literacy. And then also asking teachers to fill out surveys and inventories to find out what assessments they're using. We, as an administrative group, have met with Hill twice for two hours where they ask us questions and collect data so that they'll be able to present a report to us soon. And we'll be able to utilize that for the creation of a literacy plan in the district. That will have many implications, curricular pieces, budgetary pieces, and all of those things. Also, all the data meetings happen, so beginning of year, middle of year, and end of year. We have data sweeps around assessments. And then you meet as in schools as grade-level teams to look at the assessment to help with form construction and tiered intervention. The math curriculum steering group has began, they've had one meeting. We're gonna have follow-up with other meetings and subcommittees this year and the work to look at curriculum around math. And our evaluators are participating in analyzing teaching for student results. The evaluation working group, I'm hopeful, will start up in January. And the technology committee has had a meeting and will have another one soon. So that's a brief report from me. I'm gonna turn it over to Melissa for the MCAS update. Oh, also, grant. So back earlier in the year, I applied for a grant with the Department of Ed for shelter, support for the homeless shelter for our multilingual learners. And we were awarded that grant for Silver Lake, which was seventy-five-hundred dollars. That money will be used for, mainly for professional development from a group called Confianza, which I think has worked with, RUP has worked here at Silver Lake, to help teachers learn the best strategies to work with students, heal students. So I'm really excited about that. That'll be some nice added professional development money for us. So I'm looking for the approval to accept that, to accept that grant.
May I ask a question about that? Is that enough to cover the PD that you want to do? The seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant that's specific for that?
Yeah, it's specific for that. Yep, it's written specifically just for that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the seventy-five-hundred-dollar grant for the PD.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that was Melissa Green. Thank you.
Melissa?
Great. Hi, everyone. My name is Melissa Green and I'm the social studies curriculum coordinator. I'm here tonight to give you an update on social studies curriculum, particularly in grade eight and the new MCAS exam that our students will be taking for the first time as an operational test this coming spring. So back in two thousand and eighteen, the Department of Education released new frameworks for social studies which had an increase, looking at civics, including a first-time-ever grade-eight civics course. At that same time, they also started to do a civics assessment committee where they entertained the idea of bringing an MCAS test in for social studies. In two thousand and twenty-two and twenty-three, our students and teachers took part in voluntary pilot of that MCAS test. And then last year, in twenty-four, the entire state participated in a mandatory field test. This spring will be the first time that it's considered operational, which basically means that moving forward, this is a test that all of our students will be taking. At this time, there are no thresholds set for proficiency. That will be determined after they have this spring test under their belt. And at this point as well, the Department of Ed has not included the civics MCAS as part of their accountability reporting. But, that being said, we did get some pretty limited data from that field test this fall. They gave us data on fifteen questions out of what is a thirty-two-question multiple-choice section as well as what they call a performance task, where students are given some primary source and secondary source documents, and they have some multiple-choice questions as well as a writing or written response component. We got fifteen questions worth of data. And this fall, myself, Dr. Clifford, and Principal Coett, along with our eighth-grade teachers, did a data analysis review of that. What we saw was pretty consistent with what we've seen elsewhere, that there were three questions out of the fifteen where our students were required to analyze a source, and they struggled with that. That was an area they scored lower than what we would like to see. And that was consistent with what we also saw with ELA. We did see two questions that they scored. You know, one of them was eighty-three percent of students got it correct. It was well above seventy. And it's actually the same for the state, we're telling two questions out of the fifteen that students scored above that seventy percent. So again, there is no proficiency threshold set at this point. But as they said that and we're able to gain more data, you know, we'll be able to give you a more comprehensive overview of it. One of the things that our teachers are doing this year that I'm really excited about is we've adopted a new curriculum. And through that curriculum, we're really looking at opportunities for our kids to engage in the civic practices and the discussions that are really meaningful and really thinking about their role as a community member. And so this curriculum is from an organization called the Democratic Knowledge Project. And they're based out of Harvard. And their curriculum is a full-year, project-based, open-source. We do not have to pay for it. It is free. Curriculum is fully aligned with the state curriculum frameworks. And not only that, Desi did a review of over one hundred civics-related curriculum documents in response to the two thousand and eighteen rewrite. And this was the curriculum that came at number-one rank by the Department of Education, both in terms of their standards around being fully aligned to the content and practice and literacy standards that are in our curriculum frameworks, but also their standards for high quality. So we had some teachers do some training, explore. So we had some teachers do some training, explore, look at different curriculum, and this is the one that we really felt strongly about. So that also led us, last spring, I applied for a grant, and we received a grant that provided us with three years' worth of support from the Democratic Knowledge Project. It amounts to almost $25,000 worth of support for our teachers to do professional learning, to have first access to resources, to be in a community of 21 other schools from around the state that are implementing this curriculum for the first time. Their hope is to add another 50 schools at minimum for the cohort next year. And one of the other things they do is they actually come and do school visits, and we've already had them out three times this year to meet with our teachers and give feedback and support them in this process. Through all of that, there's a lot of data opportunities within the curriculum, and I know that that's really helpful for our teachers. There's really high-quality formative and summative assessments. They also have a pre- and post-test where we're able to look at baseline data and look at student growth by the end of the year in terms of the curriculum frameworks. And so just as the time goes on, and I think we're more in it with this curriculum and see how the full MCAS exam rolls out, we'll be able to not only give you more data, but I think more strongly support, particularly in our folks in the ELA department and the work they're doing around literacy as well. Like Principal Coett said earlier, we love having visitors, and my grade eight teachers are so proud of the work they're doing in the store, our students. It's pretty incredible, and so we welcome you. Really, anytime you want to come and see a grade eight civics classroom, they would be thrilled to have you.
You might have to jump into the debate, but...
Yeah, you might actually get in it with them. I found myself on a, you know, standing up in a spectrum line the other day and talking with students. It's really incredible stuff. So welcome. Any questions that you might have?
Jason, question?
Okay. Yes, people that came out today from the district, and we also were sent in regards to MCAS. Are we all in touch? In regards to the change of thing? Is that, that's the thing you're looking for, right?
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Think you're up, Dr. Prue.
Okay. So we have been working on our budgets with the principals from high school and middle school. Special education, we met with today, and we will be prepared in January for our preliminary proposals for you. I'd like to thank Dr. Hannah Reese for the creation of the Special Education handbook, for her and her staff. It does a nice job of outlining our protocols and expectations across our districts, and I just wanted to thank her and the Special Education Department for that. We have a, I mentioned, it might not have been a school committee, but I know that everyone knows that the joint meeting for tonight was canceled, and rescheduled for January 16th. It's going to take place at the Kingston Town Hall, because Kingston is required to provide live, online participation at the same time as their meetings. So they've asked the towns to participate at the Kingston Town Hall, and both Halifax and Clinton agree to that, so they will also be at that meeting. In addition, Halifax and Kingston have applied for and been approved for a grant, looking into the costs and benefits of full regionalization, and they would like to request a spot on the agenda at the joint meeting to talk about that grant and what they hope to discover by going through this process. They'll also be looking for, my understanding is this, participation from school committee members as well across all districts that are interested in participating.
Is a demographic study included in that?
Not necessarily, no. Not traditionally, but again, if that's something that we think is important, again, it might...
It might tie in, it might be something we should additionally fund at the same time, because I think it's going to be part of...
I don't know if it would qualify under the grant that they received, but again, I think that that's an important question to ask in terms of looking at the numbers of our communities and our needs.
Dr. Prue, one of the contingencies on that grant that I see is that both Halifax and Kingston, both the MBTA, part of that, Halifax had it Monday, and are you kidding me? That's part of accepting the grant?
It's contingent, I'm sorry. If I may, Cody has already reached out to the state, the state has already transferred the grant to Kingston.
Oh, nice. Thanks. Great.
It's all set regardless of Halifax.
Okay. Yeah, it was in there. There's the first one.
Could we just make sure it's on the agenda for the 16th, just talk about the demographic study too, so that we can have a brief sound?
We could ask the chairs of both committees and demographics. Okay, next, sorry, next item. In your package, you will see a calendar. It's the 25, 26 school year calendar. We have presented this to our principals at a meeting, and then again, for further follow-up. So you'll notice, I'll just point out a few things, because most of these things are basically in the same places as last year. The in-service for teachers would be the 25th and 26th of August, and the first day of school would be slated for August 27th. You'll notice in December, this is something that I want to draw your attention to, in 2022, we agreed to a half-day before the winter break, and so you'll see the 23rd is a half-day. I'm also looking for the school committee to approve the day, January 2nd, to be off rather than coming just for Friday. There are a number of schools who are not coming into school on Friday. There are, there may be some schools that are too.
And taking the two weeks potentially as well.
Oh, okay.
For some floating out there.
So again, I don't think it's unreasonable to not open school for a single day. I think that some families may appreciate that. It's something for you to consider. I just want to point it out because it is different than last year. You'll see that graduation is slated for the 29th, weather permitting, and you'll see that the tentative last day of school with five days would be the 22nd. If we had no snow days, it would be June 12th. Also notice how we added that this, the last day of school is a half-day for elementary schools and the middle school. We were asked to include that language at the last calendar date, so we've incorporated it in this year's draft of the calendar. So I'm presenting it to you for a possible vote tonight. It would need to be reviewed by all of the committees and voted by all of the committees before it became official, but it's there if the committee so chooses to vote this tonight.
Should we open up the floor to discussion before I take a motion after? Seems a little on the early side personally, but, Jean?
I will say, parents start asking around February, March, so while I definitely anticipate that we may have to make an amendment to it, it still has to be approved by all four committees both times. It can't be just altered by one committee, so I don't see any harm in approving it early and hoping that there's not certain amendments coming back when it's necessary.
And I've already taken a look at this, so I guess I'll go. Oh, no, not yet. I'll take a motion if someone has one to accept the calendars presented.
Madam Chair, I'd prefer to hear some of your thoughts and comments before we open up.
So I agree with Dr. Prue personally about the January 2nd. That was my main strong feeling. I don't think there's any way around the big discrepancy between the last day in June, given the Juneteenth holiday and just the nature of snow days and everything. I think we're stuck with that 10-day discrepancy either way. Those were really my only strong thoughts. I don't know if anyone else has any other thoughts beyond that. I personally don't think that... I would love, I'm a big Christmas person, I would love to have two weeks off the holidays, but I think that just pushes out that last day even further and kind of disrupts end-of-the-year plans, so.
Jean?
But just a reminder, the 22nd, that is with the built-in snow days, so other than that, the 12th.
The 12th, she's very, she's a whole, much of a week and a half. Michael?
Can I get a, if someone could remind me, the September 2nd is service day. I know there's two the week before, but what is September 2nd? It's so close to the other ones.
Previously covered election day.
Yes, so there are some years where it's election day and, or...
Primar, or I can't see primar.
So we wanted to stay in keeping so that we didn't...
And also, as the math curriculum review committee works this year, the thinking is if we do indeed adopt the new math curriculum, we need professional development for the teachers. That's a thought during that, maybe professional development.
The week after?
Or... Question? I would entertain a comment from Jason too, after I say something, but I will say, Michael, as a veteran educator, the first, those two pre-first day of school PD days, those are usually taken up with things like civil rights training, getting your classroom ready. You're not really doing curricular PD that's the same. I don't know if you have anything to add to that, Jason.
Does that, with the addition of the one, because I see here that the February holiday falls as an additional day, does that add to the next year, or does that, did we use the one of ones from March? Because previously, I think we had the primary day in lieu of the Monday following the February vacation.
And we should only have two professional development days on the... Yeah, it doesn't add up. We sometimes have one in November, but we don't this year.
Right.
So it's kind of, yeah.
There's no one.
Yeah. So it's still only four full-day PDs, three to...
Any thoughts?
Thoughts probably be there. I'll make a motion that we approve the 25, 26 calendar as presented, with the understanding that maybe...
Second. All those in favor? I think that was...
And Dr. Prue, I know that Mark had asked about the MCAS, or Jeanne had asked about the MCAS, and I think we kind of glossed over it.
So today, I sent out to principals, I sent out to school committee members, and I sent out to the community a document of the Department of Education related to legal changes as they pertain to MCAS and competency and determination awards. So just to go over a few key points, students who have not yet earned their competency determination will instead earn a CD that follows a process as described in the new law, by satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the student's district, showing mastery of skills, competency, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards and curriculum frameworks in areas measured by the MCAS high school tests. Districts determine local graduation requirements in their district, so we have graduation requirements currently in our handbook. Participation in the MCAS is still required by federal and state law. The question did not change this requirement, and DESI's accountability system will continue to use assessment participation rates and the resulting achievement and growth in its annual determinations for each of our school districts. DESI will continue to offer all scheduled retest opportunities for at least the foreseeable future, depending upon the need. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarship Program, the Stanley Copplett Certificate of Mastery Award, and the State Seal of High Literacy has not been changed by the new law. They will continue to utilize MCAS scores as qualifications for the award programs. And I think that summarizes some of the highlights that may or may not be surprising to people with the passage of the law, but we still will be required to participate in MCAS. Students will still be required to take the test, and we will still be accountable for the scores and participation rates, and we can still use them, obviously, for assessment purposes to help determine our needs, strengths, and if this isn't aligned with the standards.
I have one question, and just reading through the document, and I don't know if any of us know the answer. So in the past, I always understood the CD to be the MCAS. Does, are the schools required to like submit to the states that their graduation requirements are the CD, or do they need to create some sort of, do we need to create some sort of new, this is what our CD is?
Not at this time. There's a little bit of language in here that says that DESI may come out with guidance for us, but again, I can't say for certain, but I see some...
So I've had this real experience of having phone calls with people I never thought would call me. So I've been talking to Preston Johnson, the Applications Commissioner, Jeff Ragley, the former commissioner, various legislators on this topic. We've been through this. We have precedent here, and Silver Lake to deal with this as we went through during the COVID pandemic, when the MCAS was suspended as graduation. We have trained educators and administrators who develop competency looks like, which is one of the reasons why question two passed by such a wide margin. The caution that I'll extend to everyone now is we need to be very, very careful that DESI, if DESI doesn't do an entrum around the will of the voters in creating a new state mandate that is already widely rejected by the voters in Massachusetts. So I'm working with Senator Lewis, who is the co-chair of the Joint Committee on Education right now, to try and craft some legislation to protect the rights of individual districts, but to give some guidance moving forward to make sure, you know, the federal accountability standards are still within the MCAS realm of the event, but also the local control is under her section. So I wouldn't suggest anybody make any moves in the next year, just to see how it all comes out and entrust the process that we went through, that we use there in the pandemic.
Thank you, Jason. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you for that, Dr. Prue. So that's it for you.
That's it.
Thank you. So we're on to courts of special committees. First up is SLEA.
Hi, everyone. Carrie Infline, the High School of Green, also the SLEA secretary. I'm here on behalf of Jeff Stru, who's the president, she's currently under the weather. She did send something for me to read, though. The Silver Lake Education Association would like to just take a minute of your time to show our appreciation for a group of educators that has gone above and beyond, even more so than usual this year. Our special educators are working tirelessly and voting their time, both during the school day and outside of it, to make sure our students are getting the services they need, while also working to make the required changes from the state. Our educators are constantly being pulled in a variety of directions, co-teaching, meeting with students and families, running resources, evaluating for, writing and modifying IEPs, adapting to the new IEP perimeters, in addition to learning an ed plan and working through the Swedish parks. I'm sure there are countless other things that are left off of their list as well. SLEA wants to recognize the dedication to their students and to thank them.
Thank you. Thank you. Admin review.
There was no meeting, but I would like to say something. I believe over a year ago, Dr. Prue promised to give us updates regarding CTE and opening a new program, so I would like to ask if there's any update or how the things are moving along.
Sure. Would you like to?
Yeah, sure. So I do believe we had a CTE subcommittee meeting earlier this year, where we shared that the biggest hurdle right now is knowing what our budget constraints are or not. So as soon as we know more about that, we can make a recommendation, but if we are able to add... But if we are able to add a program, our recommendations add the marketing program. As we discussed, again, it's a, I was going to drive shop is sort of the phrase that we use in the industry because it doesn't require heavy machinery and things like that to support it. It's something we can manage with our current space. But a lot of it really comes down to what our budget looks like this year because we would have to add a staff member for year one and then a second staff member, um, after year, early in year two. It requires textbooks, computers, materials, and everything else we need to build the infrastructure of the program. Kind of in a holding place until we know what our estimates are with the budget. But Mr. Glass has put all those together in the R and R requests and I'm sure we'll be speaking to that in greater detail during the budget season.
You're welcome. Chairwoman, there's four correspondents. Gordon didn't share anything with me, so. Jason, legislative agent's report.
So first I'd like to thank, um, those people who could join me down the gate for the MAS, the MAS S conference and the delegate assembly this year for entertaining representing Silver Lake there. We went through some really good initiatives and afforded planks and the platform that I have to bring forward to the state house. We have the school committees in Massachusetts, which is why I've been engaging in some of the legislative engagement. Former Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, is currently working at MIT. He is the person that is interfacing MIT's computer technology department, specifically their AI department with public education. So he is a good spokesperson for both public education and integrating technology into classrooms. So I'm in conversations with him to try and develop some professional development for school committee members. I know he's already working in the Super Dens Association to develop professional development for them as well. Unfortunately, my conversations with Acting Commissioner Johnson have been a little bit more stressed primarily around the idea of a blind lottery for Chapter 74 programs, vocational technical education programs. Right now there's completely more to eliminate of attendance requirements, discipline requirements, grade requirements for entry into Chapter 74 programs. The allegations are that those practices create imbalance in equity opportunities. However, a broad review of Chapter 74 programs across the state have only found four schools that have any issues with underrepresentation of protected classes and DESI is already working with them in professional development and to come up with policies to address those issues surgically. The idea of having a completely blind lottery is not a surgical approach to isolated incidents and would have profound impacts across the state. Principal Gil is reporting that she talked about a teacher recommendation as a prerequisite for one of the courses that she would like to offer. The slippery slope of the blind lottery is those also charged at the state level as well. That children go through our educational program here, kids go through several rotation, then get into two more specific labs to do their rotations in, and then based on their performance and reviews of their teachers, the professionals in charge of their licensure, they get assigned into different programs for the next three and a half years. The blind lottery people are already saying that they think that should be abolished as well. So it's a very tenuous situation right now. Legislature backed off on it, but the board developmental and secondary education seem to be leaning in on maybe changing regulations instead of waiting for anything else to be changed. So again, I appreciate the work that MAB has been doing on behalf of the vocational technical education schools in Massachusetts. MAB had a huge win recently, a hoisting license we need been talking about for a year and a half where kids in agriculture weren't able to utilize the tools of their trade. Thanks to Senator Moran's push, she filed a bill last year that finally got adopted in the economic development bill, which just passed last month. Our kids are now to be set quickly and get under the license and be trained professional in their classroom. So there's a win. The state legislative cycle is starting up. There's already people filing for the next legislative cycle. Kathy will be re-filing for our regional school assessment reserve fund. She's also doing a special ed reserve fund, trying to get that from 2% of net school spending to 5% of net school spending. I was asked to give testimony on how much money should be allocated for circuit breaker next year and we're asking for $667 million, which is about $58 million more than last year. The basis didn't really look enthusiastic about the number. Unfortunately, we may see our first year in over a decade where we don't hit the 75% threshold for reimbursing for circuit breaker, which we need to understand. Additionally, Silver Lake fell off of the rolls potentially for the rural aid that we've been getting for the past several years because of how many people per square mile Plunkton is also showing, which is one of the indicators of rural aid in Massachusetts. Replenatories are looking to that for us, but as of right now, we can't count on rural aid this year. Also, for the past 18 months, I believe we've only met benchmark by a decent amount. That's how much revenue the state predicts to take in each month. We've only made it by a decent amount, two months out of past 18. So we're going to have a great problem getting a lot of money from the state this year. In addition to that, you know, I stayed away from elections. Elections are over. President Trump, when he was candidate, Trump had mentioned potentially dissembling, um, some parts of the Department of Education, potentially dismantling it in its entirety. It does seem like candidate Trump is looking at potentially shifting all the title funding directly to the states and bypassing the VR proceeding in Washington. That might be an efficiency, not a bunch of aircrafts watching them just sending money to the state, that does cause an issue of how the state analyzes those title funds to individual municipalities and schools. And unfortunately for us, most of that would be base assessments. And when people look at our towns, they don't see much data. So we could be losing out on federal funding like Title I, Title II, and Title IV, which are some of our biggest levers of federal dollars that we have. What this comes down to is we need to be depending on each other and our communities and the voters of our town meetings to move the budgets that we put forth this spring. There's not going to be a potable at the end of the rainbow that we can turn on from the state or from the federal. So that's where we are at this point. Thank you.
Mark?
Can I ask what the number is for the rural funding this year? The scope of the.
Last time I looked, we were at about $157,000 for a year, but I don't know if that's accurate. I'd have to go back to Sarah and my own desk data. That's not.
That's pretty significant.
Yeah, well, Plunkton for several years was getting tens of thousands and Silver Lake was getting six figures. Losing that is obviously devastating considering where we are budgetarily and looking at trying to move to a four block, two day cycle at the high school, getting some people into the business office so we can actually get the job done that we're supposed to be doing as a district and not be receiving warning letters from the federal and state auditors and mandated people who are looking at our books. We, we have some work to do here. We do need to lean into our budget, but it's going to again come down to our neighbors, our fellow taxpayers and the people who show up at town meetings.
You know, just anecdotally, unless you follow us year after year, month by month, especially during budget season, two years ago, we had extra money from the state. We were thrilled and we gave the towns a break and we were, we were in a good position. Fast forward only two years and we're, we're very tight. It looks like we possibly may have funds that we were expecting perhaps not come in. And it's really difficult if, if the taxpayers don't follow us to understand the roller coaster of finances that we ride over and over again. And again, it's just an anecdotal comment. You, you can't explain a lot of this at town meeting. Well, two years ago we had this and you know, it's, it's really such a, uh, his, you know, historic and ever flowing, you know, change. Honestly, it's a roller coaster and again, it's so difficult for people to understand unless you're listening to us and following us over time.
I agree. I actually made that point at our town meeting. Someone said, but what came, I think you need to take another look. And I got up and I said, we've been doing this since November of last year. We've just gotten the name, but we've been doing it with your, everyone doing the work.
So I'll add to the conversation just to put it out there. I told this publicly, it's like Plunkton School Committee meeting and the Finance Committee in town. There's a significant chance that Plunkton will need to consider a proposition for an F override for this spring. We had some budgetary overruns at the elementary level. The administration, both central office and building base did a great job bringing to varying resources we could. We spoke with the Finance Committee, support selectmen. We used all of our special stabilization fund to address this. We managed to take a pretty deep hole down to about $46,000 and we're hoping the Finance Committee and the town voters will give us some money in special town meetings to fill that budgetary gap so we don't have to lay anyone off. But the reality is that new number is where we're starting from looking at next year's budget. So I'm already about 6% above where I was last year for my starting budget debt at Plunkton local. So we're all got very close to the levy some towns more than others last year in the spring. Really important to have that conversation at our January meeting with the towns when we all sit around that table. For them to let us know where they are, which they're not going to have the full picture, we're going to have to let them know where we think we're going to be. And mind you, this is probably before the governor's budget even comes out. So we won't know state aid, they won't, and we won't. It's a good beginning conversation, but that's all.
Any further discussion? Jeanne?
Just to add that, what Jason said in regards to what happened with Plunkton's budget this year, Kingston experienced the same thing a couple of years ago. And I just want to warn you that the town then accused us of, I believe it was a 12% increase and it was like, no, you have to consider that we had a deficit mid-year. So we were really only, we were looking at a much less of an increase, I believe it was around 4% off of the actual figure, not the projected figure that we had voted on back in the spring. So just understanding, um, the differences and the changes as we close the budget throughout the year is extremely important in being transparent to taxpayers when it's ending at town meeting.
Thank you for mentioning it. Thank you, Jeanne. Thank you, Jason. Um, on to negotiations and. We did have a meeting, um, last Thursday. So we approved our annual report, which is now going to go to DESI. It had to be approved before December 31st. That was approved unanimously. There was only one big piece of news. The Department of Developmental Services has approved the Midbury Collaborative's bid. So they, they haven't made the bid yet. They've gotten approved to be able to make a bid to provide services for recent transitions out of PACC from ages 22 to 30. So this is a pretty big deal. They're very, very excited about it. They are currently operating at a deficit, um, again with the ebbs and flows. A couple of meetings ago, we were flush with cash. Some of that was returned to the towns and now they're looking at being a little bit financially strapped, but they anticipate that that will be resolved over the next few months. And we are up for possibly being audited this year, so maybe interviewed. That was basically, it was a very short meeting, so it was basically thanks. Jason?
So the freshman class of legislators are at UMass Amherst this weekend. They're mandated training before they take their office. A longtime member of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative and the Plymouth School Committee, Michelle Badger, was recently elected. So we have got another former school committee member handle legislation, someone who understands the day to day and what we go through. It's always good to have another person. You don't have to explain one-on-one school committees. So congratulations, Michelle.
On that note, I believe you all got a reminder about chartering of course. How important that is.
Mark? Chartering of course, the training for new school committee members required. So I think that's it for PACC. Policy?
So thank you to Karen for putting together the meeting. I know she was having problems getting some of us to reply. Guilty. Five o'clock on January 7th is our meeting. Again, this is mostly gold over changes to Title IX, which is ironic because we just hear changes to Title IX about a year and a half ago. And I predict we will have changes to Title IX again in about a year. So thank you for that.
Will we be expecting a vote on those on the night today?
Uh, I don't think so. We'll have to do first read, second read. There's no emergency because we already have to do them by federal and state law, just to bring us some compliance.
Thank you. Safer.
Safer. We had, we had a meeting on, uh, November 22nd, uh, 21st, um, on a Zoom meeting, virtual meeting. We're going to be trying to have more and more meetings in person going forward, allow us to interface back and forth. We discussed the school zone briefly. The funding did come through for that, if I haven't said so before. The signage and the funding, found a case that absorbed part of it and they got our good funds to pay the rest. We know all the case, uh, district, and they're going to move forward with that if they haven't already started. We have a lively superintendent, so it may be delayed some of the.
I did send an M school summary, so maybe I'll saw.
I think the materials are coming in pieces. Be patient. We discussed some HVAC issues with the HCT office and some other issues. Mike was already highlighted tonight, building, uh, the admin building HVAC and that. We discussed the plank to garage door project, which I think we've been at these evening. We talked about admin space and several options that were available, um, that we need to consider and would like to move forward towards this budget process. We have some plans of a typical offsite office building that's available. We have also the plans that I'd like to have included in the full committee. I don't know if these electronically in Silver Lake folder or not, but this was the study that was done in April of 2023. So I'll give those to Karen just to have them available in case you want to discuss those on the night after our Safer meeting, which is coming up that day too. Uh, we discussed capital plan and Sarah is promising us a new and improved format. She showed us some plans from before, on the previous meeting of other schools and how they do it and we're looking forward to that. Also waiting for our comprehensive facility queue to come back from Scott Bancroft, AVE. That was initiated last week, just a little, got a little delay starting off. They were waiting for, you know, the app, wait for the start, hokey dokey. So that's going to delay. Hopefully we'll have some information so that we can actually get some of those items clarified for our budget season. It's going to be a little push right now to finish that up. The, oh, uh, one of the options for the admin building would be to do some, uh, the lease phase versus the purchase also. We discussed and tabled the electric vehicle charging stations, but couldn't really come up with a spot on campus that those are going to get, we're getting excited about. And the permitting, eyes on hold, funding isn't available for the applicant to come through and it's unclear. So that'll be a decision that we kick in down the road, perhaps when we visit. Wastewater Treatment Plant, we didn't have a meeting with Jill Attendant and Principal at the wastewater treatment plant. We all learned a little bit about sewage treatment, but more critically the environmental side of it, the science involved. And the state Massachusetts threw its vendor that provides trade for sewage treatment plant. plant operators, does a request of interest to use Silver Lake as a local site to certify operators and to recertify and continue education here at Silver Lake. The nearest site right now is in Essex, and that's quite a view for most of folks in Massachusetts. Kingston Sewer Department initiated this idea when they found out that we built a plant for teaching facilities, so it could be a free classroom available to these small numbers groups as a classroom space in there, but we would probably have much impact with the school, perhaps if we have to give a bigger test, we would need a weekend to come in and use the facilities, which we can discuss at that time. But looking forward to that.
Sorry, can I just interrupt with that? Like, we could get money from the state for that?
Well, that's what we're hoping. Yeah, this is a no-cost item. If anything, it could be a revenue source for us to let them use the facility. They're very excited about it, which, as soon as we can coordinate the holidays to get a conference call on that, I'm looking forward to it. And again, the Kingston Sewer Department is very excited about being involved and moving that forward. The environmental science is available to our students. You can start considering that as a field trip too, because there's so much science involved. Doesn't sound like a great garnish job, but when we start talking about six figures to do that job, I think it would be a significant input if we could get our students involved in something like that. Right now, it's going to fall onto the adult education side and probably an off-site lease, you know, arrangement, we'll see. Next meeting's on the night, and like I said, I'm going to add these, ask to add these materials so we can all look at the different admin buildings. We do need to consider our admin resources. I think we addressed it a little earlier by Jason. We've looked in the building we have, it's certainly not adequate for the people we have in it right now. It needs to be updated. We need more room. We need more staff, and in that end, it all puts together. Right now, a lot of space is depressed in the market because everybody worked from home and is yet to come back, and this could be an outstanding opportunity to get into a long-term waste of purchase. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I think Treasurer's Report is next, so I hope that's, Mark?
Mark, I'm going to apologize, there was a piece of paper that was.
Yeah, I thought.
I don't know.
Was it the pink one that you wanted me to read?
No, it was a white. It was a white paper, and I have a copy of it if you don't mind me going.
Go ahead, I'll give it to you, please.
There are 20 warrants here in this stack totaling $2,41,724.70. There are also two student activity account warrants totaling $39,818.58 for a grand total of $2,081,543.28. In addition, there's a payroll warrant, I'm sorry, two payroll warrants for $1,989,379.89 for a grand total in this pile of $4,070,923.17 for our December warrant. Thank you. Sarah, Union 30, oh, Lucas.
I would like to just come back to SFAR meeting. There is a comprehensive facility study, right, that we spent over $70,000 on there. So I think that while we're spending such significant amount of money, that we should have some comparisons, some quotes, some bids, not just award or give the $70,000 to one particular company and to the company who's taking care of our CTE doors, and the result is what it is. So that's just my opinion, that we should take care more of our financials, not just randomly spend $70,000 to one particular company.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
So Lucas, the money was approved by the committee to spend on the comprehensive review back, stop me if I'm wrong, two meetings ago. We voted to address that. We've already hired the gentleman to do it, which is a beaver associate, and they were already under contract to do that, but they didn't have a start date till last week to go forward.
Okay, but is this company the only company who's doing this type of study in the state of Massachusetts?
I would say no, but we defaulted and made the choice to go forward with them as our house document because they were available and they needed to. Because they're doing the study, they'll also be more knowledgeable the equipment we have, so they continually advise us. We hired them as advisors. We don't have to use them, but we're watching. But that decision was made a while ago to use them, to do this comprehensive facility study.
Okay, but for the future, I think that for the future decisions, we shouldn't just blindly pick up the one advisor that we have and give the job to, 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 to whoever else.
Note taken, and that's why in the contract that Sarah explained to us that we do not have any obligation to go forward with their services, but they happen to be available, and that's why they were chosen, but we did vote to choose that to go forward. We talk.
Thank you. Okay, next topic, Union 31?
Chair of meetings is from tonight to the 16th. I'm calling the town hall about Creuset and the town administrators reach town leader.
Single signature warrants?
So we did not have a meeting in November, so there was a warrant that went out digitally. There were 17 vouchers totaling $1,983,859.45 from accounts payable. There was, there were two payroll vouchers totaling $1,834,244.19 for a grand total Those went out for electronic signature and on November 14th, and it was work aid.
Were there any agenda attachments? I didn't see any.
Those are all the filings in the drive.
Okay. And then I will take a motion to adjourn.
I just want to be sure, I'm going to go up forward in front of you guys. I cannot get to the chair right now. I'm going to do my best to make it off my local preference, 2025, but sometimes being elsewhere might be beneficial to our local friends, if you know what I mean. So I won't be here, so I just wanted to inform the committee and my partner, so we have a forum.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Please either look later to the chair.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So we have a motion to adjourn. So move. Second?
Second.
Oh, there's all of my, we can vote on that?
Yeah. Say yay.
Yay.
Thank you. You're doing a wonderful job.
You're having a great job, baby.
So nervous.